Okay, we'll start. Okay, welcome to tonight's City Council meeting for August 26, 2013. Alderman Ryan, if you'll lead us in the pledge.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Ryan, well done. With no other business before the meeting, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Here.
Mann. Here. Deuster House.
Here.
Bauer.
Here.
Holbrook.
Here.
Havermell.
Here.
Farha.
Here.
Sasson.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Lepper.
Here.
Mussolini.
Here.
Brink.
Here.
Heinecke.
Here.
Oslog.
Here.
Fourteen present.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Deuster House.
I move the mitts of the previous meeting be approved as printed.
Second. We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
First petition is by Quincy Senior High School Student Council requesting permission to hold their homecoming parade on September 19th, begin at 6:00 PM, starting at 12th and Main, going east on Main to 33rd. They are also requesting to close Main 12th to 14th and 14th Main to Jersey, beginning at 5:00 PM for lineup of floats and to post no parking signs on both sides of Main from 12th to Quincy Senior High School, beginning at 1:30 PM.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Sasson.
I move that prior petition be granted, second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next move is by the Pink Warriors requesting permission to hold their walking to win the fight breast cancer awareness fundraiser walk run on October 12th, starting at 2:30 PM. The run-walk would start at 17th and Harrison, going west to South Park, around Park, back to 17th and Harrison, doing the route twice, auxiliary police requested.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I move prior petition be granted and the proper authorities notified, second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
By Jacob Bailey, 2228 South Sheridan Drive, requesting approval of five lot re-subdivision of property located at Northeast Corner of South 20th and Harrison Street, presently zoned R1A.
Your Honor.
Uh, yes, Alderman.
I move we send this to the Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to send this to the Plan Commission, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
By Adam Booth, 2725 Parker Drive, requesting approval of a 47 lot subdivision to be known as Ridgeview Estates, located west of Spring Lake Estates, addition and south of Spring Lake Estates, presently zoned RU1.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I want to refer this to the Plan Commission.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to refer this to the Plan Commission, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
A revocable permit for encroachment city rideaway by the local All-Timers Association requests permission to hang a banner across 5th and Main from August 27th through September 6th promoting All-Timers Association Memory Walk to be held on September 5th at Cloud Adams Park. The interim city engineer presents this request subject to the following condition. One, the city is not responsible for any weather-related damage to the banner.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, Alderman.
I move we concur with the Engineering Department.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Another revocable permit for encroachment city rideaway by Walter En- Enam- Enman, 2115 East Wilmar Drive, requesting permission to place a decorative landscaping wall in front of his property at 2115 East Wilmar Drive. The interim city engineer presents this request subject to the following conditions. One, petitioner is responsible for design, installation, and maintenance of the retaining wall. Two, the worksite must remain safe and clean. And three, petitioner is responsible for any damages to city infrastructure.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I'd like to table this for one week so the city engineer, interim city engineer has an opportunity to talk to the fifth ward, Alderman. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to table for one week, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
The mayor's appointments, reappointment of Charles Bach, Tony Crane, Del Coons, Kins Bell Jr., Tom Stefaski, and Monte Stock to the Building Commission, and the appointment of Lynn Snyder to the Preservation Commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, Alderman.
I move that the mayor's reappointments be approved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And is that also the appointment of Lynn Snyder?
Yes, and also the appointment of Lynn Snyder to the Preservation. So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
First resolution is for the honorary street designation of seminary row between 12th and 18th Streets as Jack McKenzie Drive, which was table for one week by Alderman Mann.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I see no objection, I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt this resolution, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is interim director purchasing and director of utilities recommending low quote of HD Waterworks Limited of Washington, Illinois, in the amount of $4,535 for 100 carpa horns for new service.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Brink.
I move for adoption of the resolution. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution, any discussions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is interim city engineer, interim purchasing director, and central services recommend approval of the low bid of Diamond Construction Company in the amount of $344,344.60 for 2013 capital maintenance program.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move to adopt the resolution, second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution, are there any questions?
Yeah, it, uh, oh, go ahead.
Alderwoman Lepper.
Yes, can we bring our interim director up here, please?
That's what I was gonna say.
Can you please explain, it didn't look like we had many bids turned in on this, is there reasoning behind that, or?
This type of work, we hardly ever do have many bids, usually we have only two. One of the normal bidders is not allowed to bid on our projects right now, so we did receive a normal bid, prices came in right within the range that we were expecting them to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Alderman Sasson.
Yeah, Marty, that actually came in a little under.
It was about 7% under my estimate, yes.
Your estimate, and also the, the other bidder even take out a packet, nobody else took a packet out, so we only had one, it was under.
No, it was the only bidder.
And what was it compared to last year's?
I'd have to check and see how the prices are, they were a little higher than last year, um, our prices for asphalt and concrete have gone up generally in the past year.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Marty. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Havermell.
How does this compare in amount of work we're doing, a number, if you wanna call it feet, or miles, or whatever you wanna call it, of streets?
On this project, it varies a lot because it's, it's based on what the wards actually wanna do.
Well, I'm talking in comparison to last year.
Uh, this is actually quite a bit more than what we did last year.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
Interim city engineer, interim purchasing director recommend approval of low quote of Richards Electric Motor Company in the amount of $3,488 for repairs to the blower motor and van on the methane flare at Quincy Municipal Ence, Phil Fort, Number 4.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
Since we do not have a landfill committee, Marty did contact the Central Service Committee, and we, uh, so I moved we approve, second.
We have a motion, a second, are there any questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
Engineering Department recommends an amendment to the franchise agreement with Ameren, Illinois, for the deletion of still pole and waltz lighting ad, adding one meter service in the parking lot K at 5th and Jersey.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Horst.
I move for adoption of the ordinance, our resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution, are there any questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
Next one is interim city engineer, interim purchasing director recommend approval to pay traffic control corp- corporation $10,672.50, Supreme Electic $1,033.33 for traffic signal fund for repairs at 5th and Broadway, and invoice the Illinois Department of Transportation $11,705.83 for reimbursement back to this account for expenses.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, Alderman.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution, are there any questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is police chief, police automatic committee, and interim purchasing director recommend approval to purchase 10 advanced tasers from Ray O'Hara and Company for the amount of $11,295.50.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
In order for us to shock people into compliance, we need to purchase some tasers, so I so move. Second.
We have a motion, a second, are there any questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha. Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
The next resolution is central service director, interim purchasing director, and central service committee recommend approval of the low bid of Wally Hutter Oil Company in the amount of $2,837.50 for necessary fluids for maintenance of city-owned vehicles and rolling stock for contract period of 7/1/13 through 6/30/14.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move to adopt the resolution, second.
We have a motion, a second, are there any questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is recommend approval of special advisory commission to be known as the Quincy Community Hydro Advisory Commission, whose members will assist the city council in evaluating the request to sign a letter of intent to enter into a negotiation, negotiations with Coastal. Those members being appointed are listed on your paper.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I move for adoption of the resolution. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution, are there any questions?
Yes, Your Honor, if I could make a comment to regard to the resolution. Back in April of 2012, I voted to pursue the permits for Lock and Dam 24 and 25. We have since filed those continuing permits, twice, with the last one being in June of this year. It was done this with my understanding that I would not put the tax- taxpayer at risk, or we were not spending additional capital on hydro. With that said, I've done my own personal evaluation regards to those two questions, and I also have done my own personal evaluation regards to the city finances going forward, looking at the financial structure of the city and the revenue and expenses, is in my opinion with the city of Quincy is on a tipping point. It is our due diligence to look at the revenue stream going forward. You know, we have already raised our taxes on our property taxes for the Quincy Township, we're looking at increasing, potentially increasing, the fees for garbage and recycling, we're looking at potentially increasing the fees on our water for the combined sewer overflow, looking at a potential cat tax. It's my opinion that the current, the current revenue stream would not support those potential fees, and I think it's necessary for us to do due diligence in order to answer the question is, with regard to hydro, will it not put the taxpayer at risk with regard to the letter of intent, will it not cost the city any additional dollars? And I, um, work with another alderman to put this commission together, and I think it's a good idea, and the fundamental question that I want this, this commission to answer is, will it not put any citizens at risk, and will it not cost any additional tax dollars for the letter of intent? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, Alderman Havermell.
I would have a question for legal counsel. Have you evaluated the letter of intent or looked at that?
Yes, I have.
Does this letter?
Yes, I have.
Does that letter of intent bind us in any way other than to exclusively negotiate with Coastal between now and December, in your opinion? Is there any financial risk at this point?
There's, there's no direct financial risk associated with the letter of intent, okay? However, there may obviously be some additional fees involved for the city when you're talking about city personnel and time and expense and that kind of thing, but not through the letter of intent, there's no additional expense required through the letter of intent.
And this would be for the mayor, when were you made aware of this resolution?
I had a meeting at Planning Development at 10, and I got back to my, maybe 90, I got back to my office and it was on my desk.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
If I may make a statement?
Yes.
There's a perception in the community that the city council is forming this commission because we are undecided on how we will vote on this letter of intent. I want to make it absolutely clear to the citizens of the third ward and the rest of the city that I do not support pursuing hydroelectric power, and I think signing the letter of intent is a waste of this council's time and resources. My constituents and I do not have our heads in the sand. We realize that there is a chance that hydropower could one day lead to a revenue stream for the city government. My constituents and I think that that's beside the point. As a basic principle, the government should be creating an environment for private business to thrive and not competing with it. Our city government's role should not include being in the business of selling and/or developing energy. We should let energy companies take those risks, realize those profits, and create those jobs. Putting that basic principle aside, accepting the risk of becoming an energy company to pay off the millions lost on the previous hydrodevelopment project is dangerous. Nobody can assure us what energy prices and maintenance costs will be in 10, 20, or 50 years from now. All it takes for this to become a huge money pit for the city is for any energy prices to drop and for the maintenance costs to rise, or just poor city management, which shouldn't be a stretch, considering running an energy company is not one of our core competencies. I'm not disparaging those willing to serve, I'm grateful for these members of our community. I am voting against this commission because we were elected to make these decisions, not to pass the buck to non-elected leaders in our community. Forming this commission will just be an attempt to insulate ourselves from the decision-making process. It will give elected officials another non-elected group of people to blame should this project turn south. Any one of us can seek the thoughts of any citizen or any expert on hydro, we don't need a commission to do that for us. I also have a problem with how this commission was formed, again, non-elected citizens selected without the input of the council members. I have a problem with the fact that the long-term costs or opportunities of developing hydroelectric won't be felt for decades, yet there is not a single represent, represented person from my generation on this commission. Finally, if the council needs to turn, excuse me, if the council needs to form a commission to study signing a letter of intent, how can my constituents trust the council to make tougher decisions regarding this issue that will surely become, coming down the line? Will those decisions be passed along to the commission? And what recourse will the voter have against this commission? They will have none. Forming a commission when the information has been available for months, when constituents have weighed in with their opinions, and we've been able to ask Coastal anything we please, is delaying the one thing the community has been asking us to do, and that is to vote on this issue. The folks in my ward who I have spoken with aren't conflicted on hydropower, and I wanted them to know that their new alderman is standing with them. Thank you.
Amen.
I'll ask Chambers to be quiet, thank you. Any additional comments, Alderman Mussolini?
Your Honor, I just wanted to make a statement stating that, um, the members of the commission that have been chosen, I have, um, I have complete confidence in each and every one of those members, they're great contributors to our community. I have studied it, I've talked to the citizens of my ward, and in my opinion, the collective voice in my ward is that we need to stop this, and I don't need a committee to tell me how I'm gonna vote on whether or not to go with, move forward with the letter of intent, and that's all.
Thank you, any other questions? Alderwoman Heinecke.
Thank you. The only thing I really had to say was, Jared, that was beautiful. I really don't understand what more they could learn that we couldn't already learn from Anderson, asking him directly. We've had his email address, his cellphone number, so I don't understand, somebody needs to tell me what this group of honorable gentlemen with no woman on this can do.
Any additional questions?
Alderman Brink. Let me answer that question, Your Honor. I think when we discussed hydro 21, I mean, Alderman Sasson asked a question on a regular basis, are we putting taxpayers at risk? I think we know the answer to that question, and in my opinion, I have made my determination as far as answering those questions, but in order to do the proper procedure and do due diligence and give this thing to proper consideration, you know, have independent committee look at this thing, determine, are we putting people at risk, and it will cost us any money?
Any additional questions? Alderman Ryan.
The issue of voting on this letter of intent.
If you can speak into your mic.
Yeah, the issue of voting for the letter of intent, when are we doing that?
We were scheduled to vote on that in two weeks. It's my understanding that Coastal has said to Alderman Brink that they would be willing to delay that for 60 to 90 days, that being said, that new timeframe has not been given to the administration. So I'm assuming that if the council voted for this commission, that that vote would be delayed to meet the timeline of the commission, and that also would need to be agreed upon by Coastal, they would have to write up a new letter of intent with new dates, because the letter of intent is very time-specific, and when the negotiations need to be done, and when the development agreement needs to be executed. So if the council voted on this today, my feeling is that we'd go back to Coastal, make sure they're okay with it, have them give us a new letter of intent with new dates that were agreeable to the commission. I don't know if they know how long it'll take them to reach the decision, and then as long as everybody was agreeable with that, you'd be represented with that, and then when the motion came before the council, in two weeks, it would need to be tabled again.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
Alderman Ryan, are you complete? Actually, I'd like to have, and I'm blindsiding him with this, so I apologize Chuck, Belvahimer, I do have a question for you, and I do apologize for not talking to you in prior. And the reason I'm asking you up here, Chuck, is you were a project manager for the prior project.
Yes, sir.
Okay, here's my question, um, and this may be a bit of an unfair question, if it is, please tell me, and I mean that, if it's unfair, I want you to tell me. I've looked at this project, as well as a number of us have, since the beginning. It appears to me that while this is a significantly different structure, we're going into this with a, some preconceived notions of, we understand we don't want risk, we understand we don't want cost, those preconceived notions did not necessarily exist the first time around, did they?
That's correct.
So we basically were, I don't wanna say going by the seat of our pants, but we were kind of adapting to the changes in the project as it went, is that, is that accurate?
Absolutely, because there was the 2009 stimulus act that kind of snowballed right into what we were trying to do with energy funding, plus, we weren't aware of this declaratory judgment that FERC could give, which could bless the proceedings of the partnership that Coastal is now saying they would pursue with any type of arrangement that worked out between the city of Quincy and Coastal.
So our previous arrangement, or the, even though it was a moving target, because I do remember Alderman Sasson asking at every juncture if this was risky to the taxpayer, and we were assured it was not. Quite frankly, you know, some of us up here doubted that assertion at that point even, but anyway, that's, that's water under the bridge. My, my question would be then, um, with, with that being said, did I just hear you say that we were not aware that FERC could pre, basically pre-bless or pre-ordain?
I was not aware prior to, on 21, that there was a declaratory order that FERC could basically review a arrangement, again, which is essentially the agreement before it was approved, to say that, yeah, they would accept that partnership arrangement.
And that has been all along since we started this discussion, has been understood that that would have to happen before anything else happened.
Yes, that's what Coastal has told us.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Do they have a question?
Yes, Alderman.
Chuck's here. I, I do wanna correct the record, because we're giving the wrong impression to the public. We had several meetings in the finance committee. I don't remember ever the administration and the aldermen ever saying there wasn't risk to the previous hydro project. We all knew there was financial risk. We were the developer, we were the owner, we had no partner. We took 100% of the risk, and in fact, we had violent disagreement as to the financing. We had violent disagreement as whether we, as to whether we should be issuing general obligation bonds or revenue bonds, and that's not a distinction without real meaning. General obligation bonds directly encumber the taxpayers of the city of Quincy, revenue bonds don't, and we had those discussions and we had disagreement. We took 100% of the risk with that. It's proven unwise, and some of us have apologized to the public for it, me included.
Alderman, I will correct your record a minute, those were, those were set up as construction appreciation, is that the cab bonds? Where there was always understood, the aldermen were told that would be rolled into construction costs and there was no risk, I'm sorry, that's the way it went down, is that correct? They were general obligation bonds as they're issued, but the instruction, the, the understanding was that we were told, at least in the finance committee that I was at, that those would be rolled into the construction bonding, bonding that we were no longer responsible for, that would be paid from revenue. The point of that argument is salient because we're talking about risk on this project, these are two totally separate projects.
Exactly.
And I think they need to be looked at on the merits on their own. I understand we've lost $5 million, but I think it's very important to look at these projects on their own. We, Alderman Brink is right, right in one, in more than one regard, but one regard, that we have a revenue issue. If we can do this without risk and without cost, I think we have to at least look at it, but the problem we have with this commission is we're doing this, we're putting the cart before the horse, in my opinion. This council needs to make a decision, whether we wanna move forward or not.
So are you offering a substitute motion?
I, I would be willing to vote on the letter of, a letter of intent today.
It's, I.
I don't believe we can do that.
We don't do it, we can't do it.
I said I'm willing, I didn't make the decision.
The, the.
But I would be willing.
The letter of intent was tabled for one month, and so the course of procedure, if you wanna bring it off the table, would be a new business to bring it off the table and be placed on next week's agenda, or if you wanted to give it the four weeks that was asked for, it would be on the agenda from two weeks from today, and then you could choose to vote on it or not, and we could also talk to Coastal if they would amend the letter of intent to properly reflect, one, the month that has transpired, transpired from when we originally took, took the issue up, but then, two, if the council wishes to form a commission and we would, maybe, sounds like we might wanna add a few people, give us a, you know, a few times to get those people together, so that way our letter of intent actually reflects a realistic timeframe for the city of Quincy. So is your motion withdrawn, Alderman Havermell?
I didn't make a motion, I said I was willing to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
I'm willing to, somebody give me a million dollars, but that's not gonna happen either, so.
Okay, so the question before us, we have a motion, a second, to adopt this resolution, are there, are there any further questions or discussions?
Well, I'd just like to comment, I think that the, the commission would be better focused if they would review the work product from Coastal after we sign the letter of intent.
from Coastal after we sign the letter of intent.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale.
No.
Mann.
No.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
No.
Havre Mill.
No.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
No.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
No.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
No.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Seven yes, seven no's.
The mayor votes no.
You need to say resolution.
The resolution is defeated.
Have up for first presentation ordinance amending chapter 20, added vehicle language. Be anybody.
I'll entertain a motion.
Read it a first time.
Mr. Chairman.
Make the motion, read it first time by title.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to read this ordinance first time by its title. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk will now read the ordinance first time by title.
Oops, second got the wrong one. An ordinance amending Article 5 Parking Rules of Chapter 20, traffic vehicles of the municipal code of the city of Quincy of 1980. Hearing is a first reading by title only. Another ordinance up for first presentation, and this is amending our fiscal year budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
Move be read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to read this first time by title. All those in favor? Opposed? Clerk will now read this ordinance first time by title.
An ordinance amending the 2013-2014 fiscal year budget. Hearing is a first reading by title only.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the requirements of Section 2207 of the Code of the City of Quincy be waived in the ordinance adopted.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, I just might say that this is, we maintain a fund balance that is unappropriated, and our expenses are higher than anticipated. So we are recognizing some of the proceeds of that fund reserve that exists for the insurance and setting it so that we can pay a bill, essentially.
Any additional comments? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havre Mill.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Fifteen votes. Next ordinance is up for first presentation, and this is amending the district map, zoning R1C to C2 at 1612 North 24th.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to read this first time by title. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk will now read this ordinance first time by title.
An ordinance amending the district map, which is made a part of Section 29.102 of the municipal code of the city of Quincy of 1980. Hearing is a first reading by title only. Another ordinance up for first presentation, and it's also the zoning of RU1 to RU1A8, known as Ridgeview Estates.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I move this to be read first time by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to read this first time by title. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk will now read this first time by title only.
An ordinance amending the district map, which is made a part of Section 29.102 of the municipal code of the city of Quincy of 1980. Hearing is a first reading by title only. Next ordinance is also amending the district map, RU1C to C1A at 2336 Oak.
Mr. Chairman, we've had a couple calls that not all the neighbors have had that we've had a chance to talk to, so I make a motion that we lay this on the table.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the last ordinance is also first presentation, and this is for planned development at 1739 Oak.
Your Honor, I move we read this first time by title.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to read this ordinance first time by title. All those in favor? Opposed? Clerk will now read the ordinance first time by title only.
An ordinance granting a special use point for planned development. Hearing is a first reading by title only. I have the report of the finance committee. Transfers to be $75,000, expenditures $142,997.26, and payroll to be $675,963.14. Farha, Hostlog, Havre Mill Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the vouchers be issued. The report we received, and the vouchers issued for the various amounts.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, or any, never mind. Clerk, please call the roll.
Something like that.
Yeah, something.
Something like that.
Let's vote.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havre Mill.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Havre Mill.
I move we sit as a town board, take up town business.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, we don't need to. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will now sit as a town board. One of these days, I'll get it right.
Okay. Report of the Quincy Township Supervisor for General Assistance for the month of July Balance July 1, GA checking $1,437.73, GA money market $37,903.17. Interest for July to be 627. Tax distribution for July is $44,639.98. Obligations paid during the month to be $6,878.46. Balance July 31 to be $77,108.69. Unpaid bills outstanding be $4,553.87.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the report we received and vouchers issued for the various amounts.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havre Mill.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
So ordered.
I have the report of the town auditing committee for August to be $33,018.54. Havre Mill, Lepper Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move that report be received and vouchers issued for the various amounts as well.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havre Mill.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
So ordered.
I would like to recognize that Supervisor Brink is in the audience. If any of the council members have any questions or anything, she's there. I do appreciate the fact that you make every meeting, Cindy, so thank you very much. With no questions, I would make a motion that we resume sitting in the city council.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will now resume sitting as the city council. Before we break into executive session, any new business? Madam Clerk. Alderman Gale, any new business?
No new business, Your Honor.
Alderwoman Mann.
Yes, Your Honor. The Boy Scouts are requesting to fire a containing blanks six or seven times during their fall campery at the Illinois Veterans Home from October 11th to the 13th, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Alderman Holbrook.
No new business, Your Honor.
Alderman Havre Mill.
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Farha.
One thing, Your Honor, we spent, I think you've talked to the neighbors too, we spent probably the better part of an hour tonight over on 23rd and Van Buren, between Van Buren and Jackson. They have an inadequate street. They haven't had it replaced in more than 31 years. It's a little asphalt on top of chip seal. The street's not draining. They have tremendous drainage problems, and I think Tony's got a separate motion, but I'd like to send a request that it be studied and put on the agenda to be funded as soon as possible. That means next year, Marty.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Any additional business? Alderman Farha. Alderman Sasson.
Yes, I'd like to send to the traffic commission to take a look at 23rd and Van Buren for a four-way stop, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Any additional business? Alderman Sasson.
No, sir, thank you.
Alderman Ryan.
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to refer to the utilities committee. The water bill from 4229 Bedford Court, apparently the water meter was functioning poorly, and we need to get that bill corrected, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to refer that to the utilities committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Any additional business? Alderman Ryan.
Yes, oh, yeah, there is one piece. I just lost it there for a minute. The city crews fixed a water main break on South 30th next to Kingsridge, and Sunday morning early, they did that. And so thanks to the crew for getting right on that on their Sunday morning. But more alarming is the reality of the drought and the dry ground is what caused that water main break, and we may begin to see that more frequently across the city as we did a year ago, so thank you. Three for rain. Tell me to do a rain dance.
Alderwoman Lepper.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we receive and file this petition that I've received from some neighbors. It states, "We, the neighbors of Edgewood Drive area, requesting the animals at 603 Edgewood Drive be removed. The pit bulls have attacked people and animals, resulting in serious injuries to people and death of neighboring pets. The dogs and cats are allowed to run loose and become a nuisance." So if I can hand that in to the clerk, she can.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Any additional business?
That's it, thank you.
Alderman Mussolino.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to refer to the proper authorities. A street light issue at 18th and Van Buren. It lights intermittently, so if we could have that looked at, I'd be grateful.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Any additional business?
That's all, Your Honor.
Alderman Brink.
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Alderwoman Heinecke.
Yes, I do. The First Congregational Church, 12th and Main, will be having their rally day September 8th from 9 till noon. And if we could have barricades dropped off Friday behind the church, Marty. Yeah, behind the church, and they're close off the east to west alleys in the back.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Any additional business?
That's all.
Alderman Hostlog.
No new business.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn to executive session pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 120/2, C11, pending litigation on real estate negotiations.
We have a motion, a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Mann.
Here.
It's aye.
You need to say aye, yes.
Aye.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havre Mill.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.